I now call the July 5, 2017, regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by depressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Anybody in the audience that wants to lead the Pledge of Allegiance with us? I don't see any youngsters, so anybody else that wants tortured? I'm pretty sure I see the senior boomer study group out. No, I'm just kidding. All right, please join me with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the June 20, 2017, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on June 25, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Morgan, seconded by Councilman Huckabee. Corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the July 5, 2017, bills and claims as audited by City Manager Napier.
So moved.
Who wants it? Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Abstentions? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be abstaining from Brooke Miller and Jesse Morgan's expenses.
Anyone else? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstention by Councilmember Morgan, the motion passes.
Tonight's bright spot in the community. Our Senior Advocacy Committee successfully helps Casper become the first age-friendly community in Wyoming. In May 2016, the city of Casper released its updated Senior Services Study. This report is an update to the previously conducted study done in 2008. The updated study identifies the current state of affairs for the boomer generation in Casper and includes specific recommendations for needed improvements of senior services. Since then, the Senior Advocacy Committee has been diligently addressing each recommendation and taking action. One specific area of focus identified in the updated Senior Services Study is the importance of ensuring that Casper is a livable community for people of all ages. With council's full support, the Senior Advocacy Committee submitted an application in April 2017 for Casper to become part of the AARP network of age-friendly communities. Their application was accepted, officially designating Casper as the first age-friendly community in Wyoming. This program will provide an ongoing network of communities who are working to develop programs and services to provide a senior-friendly environment for residents who have chosen Casper to age in place. On behalf of the City Council and the citizens of Casper, I would like to acknowledge each and every one of you for your dedication and passion in advocating for supporting older adults in the community. I understand that Mr. Sam Shumway, AARP Wyoming State Director, and members of the Senior Advocacy Committee are here for a presentation. We would invite you to come forward.
Madam Mayor, members of council, thank you very much. We're honored to be here with you this evening. And as you've mentioned, the Senior Advocacy Committee has been implementing tasks identified in our updated Senior Services Study since May of 2016. We're appreciative especially of the time that you, Mayor, and Councilwoman Hopkins have dedicated to serving on our committee and helping us accomplish these tasks. This partnership with AARP will strengthen our ability and increase our resources as we all strive to provide a senior-friendly environment for residents who have chosen Casper to age in place and make Casper an age-friendly community for people of all ages. With that, this is Mr. Sam Shumway. He is the State Director of AARP here in Wyoming.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, first of all, big thanks to you all and to Tanya as well. This is, let me just give you a very brief, and we're going to be very brief with this, but a quick background on how this came to be. And we talk about it as a designation, an age-friendly designation, but it's much more than that, and I'll tell you what that means. When we saw that Casper was updating its comprehensive plan, which is a really important piece of work in Casper, we also were aware that they were updating their Senior Services Report with an updated Senior Services Study. And we thought, you know, this might be an opportunity for Casper to take a look at the services, or lack thereof, gaps in services that are being provided to seniors. And so we met with Tanya and some members of the City Council, the city staff. It was back in, I think, November. And we looked at kind of their plan, and part of Phase 3, which is quite a ways down the road, was to try to become an age-friendly community. And it was part of Phase 3 because it's not just a designation. You don't just get a certificate, hang it on the wall, and say, hey, we're now age-friendly Casper. It's a lot of work. We are in the early stages of putting together, and when I say "we," this is happening with our team here in Casper, an action plan. And so we have our updated Senior Services Study, and there are a lot of areas where we can do some work. And rather than just put that on a shelf, we're now taking that next step, and we're going to identify some opportunities where we can engage with Casper and particularly with the older population in Casper where we can make a difference. And that's really what we're trying to do. An example, something's already happening and already underway. This group, this senior, the age-friendly team here in Casper, is applying for a, and Tanya was teasing, a Community Challenge Grant. And this is an AARP grant, and they have identified a need in the community. There's, in the East Albertsons, in front of the East Albertsons, it's a very busy street, and there's no bus shelter there. And so they said, we need a bus shelter there. And so they're putting together in action a grant application, and this is all going to happen very quickly. If they're awarded the grant, we'll have it done by November. And that's a really positive thing for Casper. It's a positive thing that we're doing right now. But, as I said, there are eight domains of livability. There are eight areas where we can do work here in Casper, and we're in the very early stages. We need to put together an action plan. And so my ask, my request of you all, in September of this year, we're going to have a community brainstorming session, and we're going to invite members from the community. And we want a cross-section of the community to come and say, here's an idea that I have. Here's something that we can do around housing, or transportation, or community involvement, or healthcare. We're going to put together an action plan, and over the next four years, we're going to execute that action plan. And so if you know somebody, and if somebody pops into your head right now, hey, they have a lot of great ideas for our community, we'll let you know when we're going to have that meeting, and I would ask you to invite them to come and participate in that. I'm really excited about this. It is Wyoming's flagship age-friendly community. We were one of the last states to have an age-friendly community. And I will tell you this also, Jackson Hole was sort of right on our heels. They are the second age-friendly community in Wyoming. And so I'm really proud of Casper. I'm proud of the work that's happened already, and I'm excited about the work that's going to happen over the next four and a half years. And so with that, we have a certificate. But I'll answer any questions, if you have any questions, before we present the certificate.
I just want to let you guys know, I got two super exciting books about building and design for seniors and seniors with dementia, so hopefully I'll have time to read those soon. And then, when we were at that conference, did you catch Tepa Snow's test on driving ability?
I didn't. I was at the plenary session. I wasn't in the one that she...
We should talk about that. So I know we're all chuckling, and driving's a very sensitive topic, but there's a specific test that's out there that age doesn't matter. The test specifically looks at ability. So I think that's maybe a great way to make sure all of our drivers are safer and...
Great thought. Something we can incorporate into our action plan. And that's, those are the kinds of thoughts, Madam Mayor, thank you for that, that we're looking for, and the kind of thinking, sort of forward-thinking that we're looking for. If I may, I would remiss, be remiss, if I didn't introduce just a couple of people very, very quickly. Three people, actually. First is Renee Gaminow. She's AARP's Outreach Director, and she's done a lot of work here in Casper. The other, Renee, if you would stand, and if you could bring the, yeah. Thank you, Renee. Always one step ahead. Also, Kate Saracay is in the audience. Kate is AARP's State President, and most of you probably know Kate, a former member, a former member of this council, a former mayor. She is a wonderful resource for AARP. As I said, she's our State President, and so she's kind of head of AARP and throughout the state in our volunteer corps. And then also Dave Huff. Some of you know Dave. He worked for the city for a number of years, and he is kind of taking the lead on this age-friendly work, and has some really great ideas, and has a great team that they're building to execute this over the next four years. So, again, huge thanks to Tanya for her work as well, and that's it. We got a certificate to give you too, so come up and present that.
Yeah, if you guys want to come up and then, are we doing a photo op? Okay.
Can we do that?
Absolutely.
Come on, everybody.
Don't make me come down there and get you. Smitty.
Should we try to balance a little bit? You have to move to the other side. Let's get a little tighter.
I got this. All right. Thank you.
Here, here.
Nice try, Smitty. Thanks, you guys. There's nothing I love better than tormenting all of you two and making you come up here, so... Please read the consent agenda title.
Established July 18, 2017, as the public hearing date for consideration of new restaurant liquor license number 35 DT Wings &amp; Greens LLC, doing business as Downturn Wings &amp; Greens, located at 4035 CY Avenue.
The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing date just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the Generation Casper Comprehensive Plan Update. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to J. Carter Napier. That document dated June 26, 2017. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit publication, as published in the Casper Star Tribune dated June 21, 2017.
Mr. City Manager, do you have a report?
I do, Madam Mayor. Thank you, and members of the council. I don't know if many of you are aware of the extent of work that has taken place with regard to this particular item. One of the hallmarks in my mind of a good comprehensive plan update, or comprehensive plan in general, is with regard to the engagement that the public receives in regards to providing their input and the feedback and so forth necessary to put a good plan together. This is certainly one of those plans. You're probably aware that 25 separate public focus groups took place in the preparation of this update, in addition to 17 other community events for the purpose of engaging the community and gathering input. So my hope is that you'll view this update as reflective of what it is that your community envisions for our city. Some of the hallmark features of this update is with regard to land use planning and transportation, master planning, and so forth. But one of the exciting features that I think this plan deals with is economic development opportunities as well. And so in my estimation, that's rather unique for comprehensive plans, and I think it's important to note for this update that that is a feature of what it is that you could potentially be approving this evening. We do have individuals here tonight that would like to take just a little bit of this forum's time, if you will, to give a couple other details with regard to the update that you're considering. The members of our consultation team are here, and if it pleases the council, we could have them come forward and present their thoughts.
Good evening.
Your Honor, members of the council, my name is Christina Kater, here with Bruce Meehan, members of Logan Simpson, out of Fort Collins, Colorado. We're excited to be here in front of you after just over a year of public involvement, like Mr. City Manager said. And we started that process with listening to the public, and many of those people are here today that we talked to just over a year ago. So as your City Manager has said, this has been a plan involved with the community. We've enjoyed being part of this community, going to the fair, going to art walks, going to people's homes, not homes, businesses, and in listening to what the community has to say. This plan, it's Generation Casper. We look forward to updating the trends throughout this past year. The last plan was updated over a generation ago, so we brought in new data, we looked at how the community is growing, how Wyoming's growing, how the United States is growing. We've incorporated previous plans that the community has done throughout this time, including the Senior Services Plan, as you just discussed. And we came up with a vision for the community to be economically diverse and a regional hub that embraces the uniqueness of Casper. We've talked to, we had nine public meetings, we had 25 focus groups, so over 40 events total. And this plan really builds on what makes Casper unique and what you're good at, but expands on being a little bit more diverse in a good way and more economically stable. So I think Bruce is going to say how this plan manages growth and reduces infrastructure, and how we can be a better quality-of-life community.
Yeah, we've worked on a lot of comprehensive plans, and we're extremely proud of this one and proud of your community. Originally, when we started, the question was, is the community going to get engaged? And we really did feel like we heard from them. Some of the tough issues that people tackled was land use, the idea of, do we keep growing and keep growing outwards? This plan strives to strike a balance between saying, we do have limits, to make sure that we do efficient growth and efficient use of our infrastructure, but it still leaves room to grow. So it leaves that opportunity, but it sets some parameters around that. It also says we need to start looking inward, and a lot of communities have really come and had that self-reflection that we start, we need to start building inwards as well as outwards as well. Other things that the plan does really well, and that we're extremely proud, is that it also doesn't look just at adding regulations. It looks at getting rid of some of the regulations that we have, making infill more possible, streamlining some items, making development easier within the community, especially when people, especially your developers, are taking on very challenging projects to make the community even a better place. It looks at integrating transportation and land use together. They are inseparable, especially in this community. Where do we want our economic growth to happen? The idea that we still need to move around in all modes, and that includes east-west connections and north-south connections, and making sure our land uses match up. Also, that our streets serve multiple purposes. Streets are large investments for communities, and they cannot just serve a single purpose of moving cars. They have to serve other purposes, including economic development, but also moving other people safely. It also tackles, as said, the challenge of economic development, and a plan's got to serve more than just land use. And the idea of both keeping and being respectful of our elderly population, our seniors, who have, some of them are in their next careers, and so on. And then also that next generation of making sure that our boom and bust cycles are a little bit less, and this is viewed as a permanent home for us to open up businesses, and making sure that this is a true and authentic and cool place where people want to live. Also, making sure that we have a variety of home types that are, we might think are a little bit different, but to those of the younger generation, I think are extremely exciting, we've got to make sure that we provide those. And then looking past just the energy industry, knowing that that is our base, part of our heart and soul, we respect that, building on that, but also looking at other industries that are emerging. Right here in Casper right now, the medical, education, and tech industries are coming, and we expect those to continue. Last, the plan that provides you with some flexibility, where you monitor your success, you say, are we achieving our goals over time? And there's a list of strategies that say, we're not trying to accomplish them all right now, but we are going to pick and choose which ones make sense as we move forward. And we're going to monitor our progress and pull these projects as necessary to make sure that we end up achieving our vision. And on that note, I want to thank yourselves and the community for all their hard work.
Any questions? Go ahead.
I'm not aware of the details of this, but I know that one of our states...
We all have our...
Bring it really close, really close, Charlie, really close.
I know that, I think it's corporations, but I'm not sure. There's an interim study. One of the topics that they have looked at is the possibility of giving local communities more control over property tax abatement options to stimulate core development and infill. Are you familiar with communities that have successfully utilized strategies like tax abatement?
Sure. I can speak to some. They may or may not apply. Property taxes are a complex issue that require its own set of people tackling that. But as an incentive, just to give you one example, we're currently, and you also face this challenge one day, is retrofitting, reinventing older commercial areas, especially as retail sort of reshapes itself. That includes malls and so on. In Phoenix, Arizona, they use property tax abatement as their primary incentive tool. It's called G-PLET. Essentially, it's just an abatement on property tax for a certain number of years to allow incentives for people to redevelop. That's their primary tool. You actually have more tools than that. So that's definitely something to look at, and is an option, especially when you're dealing with that balance between redevelopment and some of the barriers that they have to face, especially, say, mall redevelopment versus greenfield development.
Thank you.
No one else?
Just if I might, I'm not sure all these other folks that have put this together are going to be standing up here, but I'd like them to. Aaron took a leadership role in this, but we had a lot of city staff work very hard. And I think they had, besides having input from a lot of the public, they had input essentially from every division in the city. But Aaron took the leadership role, and I'm not sure what you're going to put on your emails, other than get ahold of Generation Casper. You're going to have to have something else, no? Anyway, thank you to all of the city staff that put all the time and effort into this. And it's going to be a great long-term plan, and I'm especially glad that you took the time to look into economic development as one of the issues that we have to look at. And the second thing, I was really happy with the fact that you put in, it's a living plan. That doesn't mean it sits on the shelf for the next 20 years and we do it over. We look at this, everything we do in mind, including what Mr. King does with planning and zoning, so it's just a conceptual plan, but thank you. A good one.
And I go to council members, and Your Honor, just the amount of work that staff put in here, this was definitely not a consultant-driven plan or a public-driven plan. This was your own staff putting their heart and soul into this. They realized the importance of this for Casper's future, so I can't say enough about the staff here at Casper and the hard work that they do. So thank you for reminding us of that.
All right. Thank you, guys, very much, and thanks to the staff and everybody else that took part. Mr. City Manager, was there anybody else that was going to do a presentation before we move into the public comment?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. This time, let us those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the plan to please approach the lectern. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm Bob King at 3551 East 21st Street. It's easy not to be repetitive when you're the first person that talks, but I'll just briefly reiterate what has been said. This plan has been in progress over a year now. The staff and the Logan Simpson people and the community have put a great deal of time and effort and thought into it. I think if you approach it as being a document that not only this council can rely on, but future councils and future planning and zoning commissions can rely on, and staff can rely on, to give them guidance as to what this community wants. As I was going through some of my old files, I stumbled upon a document put together back in the mid-'90s called Vision 2000, if any of you were around back then and remember that. As you read that, the thing that struck me was that many of the concepts and ideas that were being formulated and put forth in Vision 2000 are brought forth in this document. So I think it's, the community has spoken as to what they'd like their surroundings to be, and what they want the city of Casper to be. And again, as has been said, it is a living document. It certainly doesn't lock anybody into something that can't be refined later on, but I would urge you to support it. And again, the staff and the Logan Simpson folks and the community have put a great deal of time into it, and I hope you honor that and respect that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Mr. King? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Good evening.
Madam Mayor, council, I'm Charles Walsh, 300 South Walcott. That's my new job location, so I thought I'd, I'm going to speak on behalf of the Casper Area Economic Development Alliance in support of this. I took on the role as the CEO of the Casper Area Economic Development Alliance a little over six months ago, and had not been involved in Generation Casper before that. And Liz Becker and Aaron Clokey and Craig Collins reached out and said, we really need some insights from an economic development perspective. And that's the thing that I believe is so important about this particular plan over other plans. It's easy to go out and say, we're going to put roads in. It's easy to go out and say, we're going to put bridges in. But when you align that development with where the market is trying to drive and where they're investing, I feel that is one of the most important things that this plan has accomplished. So when we took over, we focused on four areas: prosperity, skills, livability, as well as innovation. And I believe if you look at this plan and you start pulling pieces apart, this plan had the foresight to already identify many of those features and those facets. The other thing I'd just point out, that this plan also had the foresight to predict that the governor was going to come out with N-Dow. And again, as you start thinking about diversity, the state is moving into a diversified model, again, whether we want to or other parts of the state wants to or not. This plan gives us, in my opinion, a leg up. It gives us the advantage of being first to move, and I would encourage you, and strongly encourage you, to, again, recognize the hard effort and a lot of time that was put into this and support this particular plan.
Questions or comments for Mr. Walsh? Councilman Powell?
Mr. Walsh, right. I appreciate you bringing up the Governor's Program. Do you see the Generation Casper plan as intersecting well with the Governor's plans within N-Dow? And do you have any things that you think council should be focusing attention on to move things forward?
I have a lot of things, and next week, we're going to be presenting to you in work session to give an update of what we're accomplishing and what our focus areas are, so I won't delve into those. But if you look at the Governor's Plan, it's really too early to know. I mean, the commission was just set up. They had their second meeting. But one of the things that's very promising for us is we have two members here in Casper that's part of that commission. And I've been spending a lot of time with one of the members, Jared Stack, who is an entrepreneur, a very successful entrepreneur. entrepreneur, a very successful entrepreneur, and has committed a lot of time to this. And we're sharing things that are in this plan and things that we are pursuing from an economic development perspective to the commission, because the commission's ultimately going to be the one that makes the recommendation to the governor on where these, what they're calling the innovation zones. And we believe we're postured, we're positioned to pursue three distinct and unique innovation zones, and I believe the future, the state's going to have to put dollars in there, in other words, investment capital. It's not me to make that call, but I've had this experience in another state, and the state put an enormous amount of dollars to help put the infrastructure in, to put the, or build the momentum. And so it was a true public-private partnership. I believe the state will do that if Endow is successful going forward. So I'll just kind of summarize by saying, I believe this plan has a lot of future insights. They allowed us to share areas where we are focusing from an economic diversification, and we are pursuing high-growth areas, all right? Everything else will follow in, but we need, because of the way the state is taxed, we need to focus on high-value jobs, so people that are getting these jobs are able to buy high-ticket items, buy homes, because those are the things, in addition to the mineral tax, that contribute to our economic viability. So I believe, again, this plan has identified many of those.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Madam Mayor. My name is Kirsten Veneta, and I live at 1633 West Ridge Place. I've had the opportunity to be on the steering committee for Generation Casper, and I thank you for the opportunity for that. But I also am part of the preservation, for historical preservation. And I think that this plan is a really good stepping stone for getting everyone on the same page and communicating what the bigger picture is for planning and progress. And I think that in order to preserve, like you guys know, the national, we just got the downtown nationally registered, in order to preserve the things that we are wanting to preserve, but we have to make sure that we have these types of guidelines and these types of plans, so that we all can work together and know how we want to preserve so that we can progress. So I think that this is a very good first stepping stone and a very key point to that. So, thank you.
Questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Who else in the audience would like to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Madam Mayor, council, Steve Cathy, 2141 Cornwall. I also was a member of the steering committee. I believe there are a couple or three other members back here. Would you please stand up? Because those folks, along with the city staff, Aaron and Craig, deserve a big hand for helping out and getting all of this going. So these people are here as well.
Y'all were trying to hide in the audience, weren't you?
We were. The thing that I would like to bring forward, though, is it is a 170-some-page document. It covers a lot of things. I would strongly encourage every member of council to read that document, because you will have various groups coming up here with their soapboxes, pardon that expression, but trying to pick certain parts of it together. This is a comprehensive plan. It all needs to fit together, and as you start now to visit with our new city manager and talk about budgets, there are aspects of this plan that will affect that budget or that parts of your budget can affect this plan, and those things need to work together as well. And you all need to have a good working knowledge of what this plan says as you progress forward through the budget process and as you continue through your terms as council and as other people come up here with plans and ideas. Thank you.
Questions or comments for former Councilman Cathy? It's good to see you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that wishes to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Woody Giles, 290 East Magnolia in Casper. I don't live in the city. I live across the street from the city, and this is my copy of the Generation Casper plan. You should be able to get through it in just a few minutes. And I think it's a good plan, but it, like it says, it's a goal and not a destination. And a lot of things in there I like that, you know, as a goal to achieve. There's not too many things in there that tell you how to achieve the goal. That's going to take some work on your part. And a lot of comments about, we'll have to do a study to find a funding source for this or bike path or infrastructure and so, and then you read a few more pages and more, find a funding source. And one of my favorite lines in the whole thing is to put it simply, "A new economy may require a new government funding model." I thought that was great. It kind of goes along with my little thought process. And Charlie here is wanting to know about property tax methods that could be incorporated, maybe, in growth, and I'm definitely a fan of a particular property tax method that would really stimulate the growth and help the city achieve the plans that are in this thing. And there's one other thing you might be interested in, is that the growth plan shows my house being incorporated into the city, and if that happens, I'm going to be sitting up there.
We would love that. Questions or comments for? Anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Okay, at this time, I'd like to invite anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to the plan update. Please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against the plan update, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, authorize the Generation Casper comprehensive plan update.
We're moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Powell. Thoughts, comments? Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think it bears repeating that what we've heard through this process is that diversification is not just about attracting businesses, but it's about attracting people, and particularly people in that millennial generation. And what I have learned and what I think is reinforced in this report is that that generation doesn't choose places to live based on career goals so much as the place that they really want to live. And I think we've been moving in the direction of making this community a more attractive place for people to live, and we have so much to offer. We need to market ourselves more successfully and brag a little bit about the things Casper has to offer. But I think some of the things that have been risky and often criticized will pay off for us over the long term. Things like the David Street Station as a prime example. But I think the report reinforces the importance of continuing our efforts to make this a more livable community for all of the generations, and that's how we're going to diversify this economy, is by becoming a more attractive place for people to live, so they will choose this place, and that the businesses that look for potential places to move know that if they do find Casper to be their base of operations, that they will find a workforce and that people will want to move here and work in their industry. And so if it were simply a matter of low taxes, we would not have a problem with diversification. But we do. And so I appreciate that the plan, you know, supports, I think, the direction that we have followed over the past several years. Thank you.
Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. One of the things, just kind of along the same lines as Charlie, about halfway through the report, in chapter two, there's a couple of graphics there, and they compare the City of Casper with similar cities. City of Casper roughly 55,000 to similar cities roughly 57,000. You compare some of the things we have in terms of amenities. We have about 60.1 acres of parks per thousand people. The similar city typically has about 25.9 acres per thousand. Another one that sticks right out at you, we have about .8 miles of paths and trails per thousand people. That compares with other cities roughly our size that have about .6 miles. So those statistics right there, I mean, there's a lot more stuff like that in there, but they just kind of, it's one of the reasons I like living here.
Okay. I'm going to go Councilman Morgan, and then Councilman Huckabee.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to talk quickly about some of the areas that I've been looking specifically at in this comprehensive plan, and that's mainly the streets. It's always come up, the 12th and 13th Street, and there's specific diagrams in which we hope to see our streets, which includes a bike path, plenty of parking, basically space and landscaped areas that are the parkways. And I think that's a, that's a great plan. Hopefully, we can move towards that. Hopefully, we can sell that, possibly at the next one-cent tax, and allocate those funds for those particular areas, because what we're talking about is, we're talking about growth. And if we're going to grow, there's going to be increased traffic flow and, of course, hopefully, people biking to work, or perhaps those parks that are within 10 minutes of each neighborhood, that's part of that goal that Councilman Hopkins mentioned. So I appreciate everybody's hard work that they put into it. It was great sitting with you and discussing some of those topics, and I look forward to seeing it actually become a reality.
Anyone else? Councilman Huckabee?
Thank you. When we went into strategic planning several months ago, and some of these things got brought up, I made the point that we can grow and we can diversify and we can add amenities to our community, but if we don't have a good base of public safety, it doesn't matter what we do. We won't attract people if we don't have a safe community. And public safety was incorporated as one of our touchstones, and all things that we do as a city should be passed through that. And I'm glad to see that the information in this can work symbiotically with that. I think we can diversify and grow and progress, but we can also maintain safety in various capacities and work at those two things at the same time. And I was also very happy to see the historic preservation part, because, you know, to me, it's kind of a fine line between growing but losing our history, so I'm grateful for that. Thank you.
Any further discussion or amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the trade of real properties located at Block 1 of the Casper Edition. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. Pardon me, I have two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to Jay Carter Napier, dated June 30th, 2017. And exhibit number two, that being the affidavit publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune, dated July 5th, 2017.
Mr. City Manager, report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. You have had the opportunity to discuss this potential trade for quite some time now. There's an opportunity here where we can trade some property that would allow for the further development of the downtown area. That has been a major initiative of this council's as well as of our public. With regard to the actual trade itself, I thought we could look at the exhibit and talk through it a little bit and coordinate some of those questions that you might have pursuant to the description that we provide and hopefully answer your questions in the hopes of getting your support for the resolution that would make this trade happen. As you can see, with regard to the exhibit in front of you, the city has a property that is, I'm having a hard time reading that label there. Let's see. Lot 34, that is of interest to the petitioner with regard to further development adjacent to the old fire station property, as indicated on your exhibit. The city also would have interest in the property demonstrated by the label entitled Lot 39, Block 1, that would have some development opportunities with regard to projects occurring adjacent to the land in question currently. The opportunity that we have is to trade the Lot 34 property that currently is conterminous, if you will, with the city-owned building on David Street there for the parking lot property entitled, again, Lot 39, Block 1. The other advantage that we have with regard to this trade, to ensure that the people of Casper are kept whole, is that in regards to the appraised value of both of the properties in question, there is a $15,500 difference that would be made up by the property owner of Lot 39, Block 1, in order to, again, keep the city whole and make the trade equitable. There is a partner motion that would accompany this that we'll get to discuss here in a little bit, but as it relates to the two properties in question that make up the agreement between Fire Station Limited Partnership and the City of Casper, those are the primary elements.
Council now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes, and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. At this time, I'd ask for those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the land trade to please approach the lectern. Good evening, sir.
Hello, Madam Mayor, members of council. My name's Phil Schmidt, 3911 Otter, Casper, Wyoming. In 2003, I came before the city council to propose a public-private partnership, and that was to restore a building downtown. And I'm sitting here looking to my right, and I see Mr. Lubin, and I'm looking to my left, and I see City Manager Napier. I'm sure you guys will have your own warped view of who looks better after these last 14 years. But nonetheless, it was 14 years ago that we started the project, and that project was a renovation of a 1921 firehouse that was located at 302 South David. What we were able to do is we were able to take some community block grant money. We were able to utilize New Markets Tax Credits and private capital, and we put that building back on the tax rolls. In addition, what we did is, due to our need for parking, we structured a deal with the city so that to the west of the firehouse, there would be parking available for the people who worked in the firehouse. We do have three tenants there now. In addition to that, what we had done is there were some properties to the north. Coincidentally, the property that the city would now, or DDA, would like to have, that used to have a city rec center on it. I was told that that's where a lot of dances were and things like that. That building was removed, and again, we converted that into parking for both employees and for customers. Now, fast forward to approximately 2015, the DDA spearheaded a project called the David Street Station. And with their aggressive plans, they would like to have that northern lot that used to be the rec center that we currently park on for their development. At the time, it was proposed to go ahead and trade that lot for the lot in back to the west. And we were trying to be good neighbors. We considered that. We were, I mean... trying to be good neighbors. We considered that. We were amenable to that. But subsequent to that, the city had purchased the Plains Building. And inside of the Plains Building, there are actually two other buildings. One of them is the one that we had interest in, which is the rest of the firehouse. At two different locations here in town, I've got pictures, well, I only own one of them now, but pictures of the firehouse as it existed. And if you were to look from David Street, you would see the same type of architecture not, that the firehouse has on the municipal garage side. They've got the same arched terracotta. They've got some cool inscriptions above there saying, I don't know how you say it because the V looks like a U, so, movisnable garage. And, and with that movisnable garage, what we would like to do is we would like to turn that into parking. It's going to take a lot of the same things that we had to do with the firehouse. It's going to take probably regrouting the entire building. Before, what we had to have somebody do is go with a router and go around every brick, taking out the old grout because it was very soft. And then we'll have to regrout it. Structurally, we think it's okay. The roof appears to be okay. We do have asbestos. The people who put up the Plains facade on the east side were somewhat brutal on the terracotta. So I've got a challenge in front of me with the terracotta. But the good news is, we in Casper have got situations like MC and stuff where we know we can bring people in to repair that terracotta. So with that, we have another situation where public-private enterprise can work together. We would like to go ahead and make that lot available in exchange for the other lot. As has been already explained, there is some boot involved. And then, so we just need to get that consummated and the lease of the property that we were using to the west for employee parking as well. And my time is almost up, but I would like to tell council that this process is going on in earnest, this phase of it, going for the rest of the firehouse for about nine months. And Liz Becker and Mr. Lubin have just been great to work with. I don't know how many man-hours that they have in this, but it is a situation where they, they certainly helped to make it happen. So I want to pass on my appreciation for that as well.
Do you have questions for Phil? Questions, comments, feedback? Okay. Are you up next?
Yeah, that's all right.
We got to reset the timer. Okay, we're good.
Yeah, it's important.
The attorney's on the timer, you know. It's very.
Right. General from McDowell, one five nine North Woolcot, Suite Two Twenty. I represent Fire Station Limited Partnership. I think Mr. Napier gave a very good overall view of the transaction at the thirty thousand foot level. This is a two-part transaction. It has been discussed and planned as such. The first part being this land swap, the second part being the lease, which I know we'll discuss later. And Phil and I are on the agenda for that, so I'll address that later. I just wanted to, to, to kind of try not to re, not try not to repeat or reiterate, but this is a mutually beneficial transaction where the city is going to obtain fair market value as appraised. They're getting the lot that they need to complete the David Street Station. Just as important, this transaction puts a historic building in the hands of investors who have proven already to be good stewards of Casper's historic buildings and to not only be good stewards of that property, but also, also to put them to valuable commercial, commercial use. I would also like to just point out that this is about more than just this business transaction, although the transaction in and of itself is a great deal for all those involved. It's actually about continuing to revitalize the Old Yellowstone District and our downtown in line with the comprehensive general plan that we previously discussed tonight. If you have any questions or comments or if anyone speaks in opposition, I would please request that you allow Phil or I to address those questions or comments. And if you have any questions for me at this stage on the land swap agreement, I'm certainly open to them.
Questions, comments? Okay.
Thank you. And I would also like to reiterate Bill's thanks, or excuse me, Phil's thanks to Bill and to Liz. They did put a lot of hard work into this.
Thank you. Not a smile, Bill.
No, I was, I appreciate those.
You were deep in thought.
Very appreciated. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor? Good evening.
Good evening. Kevin Hawley, Executive Director, Downtown Development Authority, Three Four One West Yellowstone Highway. Two-part interest in this, obviously, David Street Station. We've been working on this. It's been over a year and a half, probably. Been pretty patient. Phil has been an outstanding neighbor, a good citizen. And I would also echo city staff's hard work on making this complicated deal go through. I remember the day, it was a Monday at about eleven-thirty, when I got a phone call because I was getting ready to go to Rotary Club. And VH called and said, hey, just want to let you know, in about a half hour, we're going to announce we're buying the Plains Building. I remember a couple of weeks after that, when some architects and engineers started talking about their time in it years before and how they knew that the historic fire station extension was part of that. And everyone got kind of excited, probably except for the city saying, oh, boy, that, you know, opens up a big can of worms. Here's an opportunity. I, I don't presume to speak for the city, but I can't imagine that the city is going to get in the historical building renovation business. Here's an opportunity with a downtown property owner who's vested, who's got the means, has a proven track record of doing historical renovation and doing it extremely well, all of which has been done and conducted in an open, fair, and transparent, transparent manner before the public. I guess in closing, I'd say, make no mistake that the current fire, fire station, downtown fire station is an absolute historical landmark. It's kind of funny when we get calls and we're giving directions. We don't use streets. We use the fire station. If you're meeting someone, you say, oh, it's, you know, do you know where the fire station is? Yeah, well, it's a block to the east of that. So here's an opportunity, again, where this historic landmark of Casper and our history can be restored and restored very well. And I don't know what the timeline is for the renovation, but it's something we can look back on and, again, be a gem and jewel of this community. I think of those complicated deals that the city has done and partnered in before. And can we imagine our community now without an ART Three Two One or Arachas? They are definitely jewels and gems of this community. So definitely in support and look forward to this going through and, and pulling the trigger on construction of Phase Two of David Street Station. Thank you for the opportunity and the consideration.
Questions or comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak in favor? Good evening, sir.
Pat Sweeney, Nine Fifty-One North Kimball.
Were you giving them a hard time over there?
Well, I, I just can't believe we're here. I mean, he, he, he and the group that he put together along with city staff, back at the very beginning, it was a very groundbreaking national partnership that Phil and I believe Liz, with her help, put together on these tax credits and how to do one of these deals. And if I'm correct, I think it was the first of its kind. In, in the country, not, not just Wyoming. And what he and the group accomplished there is nothing but remarkable. And what a credit to the community. So that's why I say, I can't believe we're here. He obviously didn't say it, but I'll say it. He has something you need. He's willing to trade, plus give boot, plus take care of the renovation of all of that, which I think he's gone too far. I think part of that, at least the asbestos removal ought to be on the city, but that's just my opinion. So I think you're getting a heck of a deal in this. And you know with his proven track record that it's going to happen. And I just would encourage all of you, even if you have a negative thought about this, you know, to consider what this will end up looking like and be an additional landmark, just as Kevin Hawley said, for, for our downtown. And I, I would have to say that I can't believe that Phil has gotten very wealthy on this project with the amount of money that they had to pour into that renovation to make that building what it is today. So I would ask you to highly consider this. And it is a two-part, two-part deal from what I'm seeing here. I don't know a lot about it. But I, if, if the next item is not authorized, I would assume then the deal's off the table and you've got to renegotiate. But I don't know that for a fact. So I think the two deals are interrelated from the looks of the map and, and the way this is structured. So, but I would encourage you to take a hard look and, and appreciate due and, and good consideration to this. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Feedback or questions for Mr. Sweeney? Okay. Who else in the audience would like to speak in favor? This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the land trade, please approach the lectern. There being no others to speak for or against the land trade, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to, by resolution, authorize the real estate land trade agreement between the city and Fire Station Limited Partnership for the trade of the real properties as described therein.
So moved. Second.
Who's first?
Whoever. Pick one.
We'll go Councilman Powell and Councilman Hopkins? Discussion. Councilman Hopkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This goes along with the project we started better than ten years ago in O Y D. And Mr. Schmidt was even ahead of that time in his redevelopment of the old fire station number one. You could just see that little gem sitting there. And it's now becoming, going to be headquarters, along with the David Street Station, for a lot of good stuff downtown. And we have seen this council, in fact, had the wisdom to go ahead and purchase that building when we knew it was going to be something good someday. And I think we're just seeing it bear fruit. And with that, I definitely will support what's going on here. This is a good deal.
Councilman Powell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Many of the significant capital expenditures that council, that came before council and that were voted on during my tenure took place during the good times, when we had surpluses and unallocated one-cent funds, the David Street Station, Hogadon being good examples. And, and we followed through on those projects as our economy took a turn for the worse. This decision to purchase the Plains property was made during the difficult times. And it was one of the more difficult votes that I cast. I believe it was a six-three vote, if I remember, because we, we knew that we were in difficult times and we did not know how long they would last. And to spend three million dollars on a purchase during those times was very difficult. Yet, I think it was the right thing to do for us, for the long-term benefit of this community. I'd like to echo the remarks about Mr. Schmidt and Mr. Kilmer being solid citizens who've done much for this community. I think it's a win-win. And we finished the station and we preserve a building. Had council not purchased this property, someone else could have and torn that garage down. And, and this way, we preserve the garage. And we also have the possibility down the road of creating a very nice public space for parking and for improvement of other properties that are on that lot. So it was a difficult decision, but I think the, the fact that we are going to preserve that garage reinforces the importance of taking action and sometimes taking risks when the, when there was a strong argument for passing. But I think, I think we will look back, this, people will look back on this, these decisions twenty years from now and take it for granted that we did these things. But it's going to be a beautiful combination of, of historic structures, plaza, and well-designed parking and other improvements to those properties. And us approving this is essential tonight.
Councilman Laird?
I remember when we first talked about buying the, we're doing something with the firehouse. That was a great idea. I just need to get a couple of things straight in my mind on, perhaps that you'll get a rebuttal from the mayor and you can answer the questions. I'm always concerned about what the people of the City of Casper think about these kind of things. So when I view this, I view it, I view it, I view it as really a cool deal that you're doing. I'm always worried about the money. I know that the appraisal that came in on the garage that you're trading is, is a lot of people consider too low. I've had people tell me it was way too low. But it was appraised at a time when, before, before the building was taken off of it. So I understand that it's, that legitimizes the appraisal in my mind. If we, if we took the, the Plains Building down and then refurbished the garage and then had appraisal, I think, people tell me they think it'd be a different appraisal. So it is what it is. It's been done. And I don't see a problem with it. But I'd just like to get it out so that people who watch the council meetings and know that at least I've addressed some of the issues they've brought up to me. The other one is leasing the, leasing the parking lot behind the building. Parking has become a big issue in the City of Casper. There's an issue about five spaces in front of Wonder Bar. People don't want to give up on what the guy have for his business development. But we're, we're going to lease you fourteen spaces for twenty years, which is a long time. Tells me you're going to be in business for a long time with that building. I didn't like in the, in the contract where we're bound by the twenty years, which you could get out of there within thirty days if you so decided to do that. I, I didn't quite understand that for business. So why would you want to do that? So we commented on that in the earlier meeting. But, and then the other, there was one other issue that if, once the demolition is done and the garage stretches a little more than we thought, the way I read that agreement is you get the whole next lot next to this, in whom you're off. Your lawyer is shaking her head no, but maybe she'll, she'll explain that. If it encroaches on that other lot, there's some reference to that in the lease. So if you just clarify that for me. And I'll be happy. Thank you.
You're welcome to come up and address that.
I guess as far as the, the lot next door, what we're concerned about is we did not have an opportunity to have a survey done. And when you're looking at God's view, it looks like there may be an encroachment. It would be on the north, or excuse me, the southwest end. And that's where the concern lies. We just don't know what is there. If it's a nice, straight lot line, there shouldn't be a problem. But we just didn't want to get into a situation where we're encroaching on another lot and there wasn't a way that we could address that. I think once that gets demolished, well, I'm going to tell you, we are going to have a survey done once that's demolished. We couldn't do it now. That was one of your questions. Does that answer it?
Yeah, I, I went over the, in fact, City Manager, at least we'll be. Yeah, I went over the, in fact, City Manager, at least what we could see from what was torn down on the inside, it looks like a great, cool building that's going to be there for it. But when I looked at it from another angle, where they had torn some more drywall out, and I looked up there, it looked to me like that was a pretty wide building, much wider than what we're trading it for. And as you say, there's no survey, so I, you know, my own eyeball telling me that, it could be right, it could be wrong, I don't know.
Yeah, and I'd have to look at the appraisals again, because they did measure both the, the lot that we are going to trade plus the municipal garage. They did measure that, but if you look again on that southwest side, there's some concern, and it's only when you're looking at it on God's View. Now, I will tell you, when I went up there with Bobby Lower, I was sitting there going, Bobby, to me, what it looks like is that there's a double row of brick in the area that I call the Nolan Chevrolet Building. You're probably familiar with that. That's the white top that would be on the west end of the Plains deal. I think what we're looking at is one of two things. Either that double row of brick that's there, or, as I think Bill or Liz brought up, we had a problem with the views we were looking at because of the shadowing. So I don't know that we're necessarily anticipating a problem with that, but again, we just could not do a survey, so.
Was there ever any talk of tearing the building down first, the Plains building down first, and then getting the full view and the full measurements, and then doing the deal after that was torn down?
That could be done. I can see a big problem with that as far as the DDA's timetables are concerned, so I don't know if that's something that was given any real consideration. I know they're wanting to put a foundation in sooner rather than later.
Yeah, I understand that's the case, too.
And what was the other parking, or the 30-day and, what was your other concern?
The 30-day, yeah, the, yeah.
I was concerned about is we're giving you a 20-year lease, and we're bound for 20 years, but you're only bound with 30 days.
Yeah, that is, I mean, I think Dallas is, we kind of, that's a good question, we discussed in the work session. That lease is modeled off another lease that you guys have for a very similar parking lot with, I believe, equivalent number of parking spaces or quite close. You know, the idea is, they may not need, once it's renovated, all 14 spaces, so that would allow them to terminate at least some of that and return it to free all-day parking for public use. But at this stage of the game, by doing the land swap, they are losing 12 parking spaces and they do need all 14.
I appreciate that. The other thing is, is I, when somebody brings up some other old lease that we're doing is drafted a certain way, I'm not a person that believes you want to keep making the same mistake twice. So I'm, so I'm, I am concerned with the 20-year, with the 20-year lease and to us, because who knows what happens if we have to do something. I know Phil, if he's going to be around, he'll always work with us. He sells it to Joe Blow, then I don't know what Joe Blow's going to do at some point in time, but I always worry about if plans get changed, somebody else comes in and wants to build something different in that area, and they may need to do something with that parking lot, and how do we, we're stuck for 20 years. But it's all money, I understand that, and I'm glad Phil's kinder than Sweeney about paying for the asbestos, although Sweeney may not know this, we're paying for the asbestos removal from the building, and you're paying for it inside the garage, which, from previous conversations, you've told me it's mainly what's wrapped around the pipes, so it isn't too big of a deal.
For both the building and the garage?
Right.
Yes, yes.
Okay, any other questions while we have these two back up? Okay, last chance for further council discussion. Ready to vote, folks? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
Good luck.
Council will now discuss the resolution for the lease of Lot 8, Block 1, in the city of Casper, Wyoming. Because this is not on the consent agenda, it will be open for discussion by council. Please read the resolution by title only.
A resolution authorizing a lease agreement between the city of Casper and Fire Station Limited Partnership for the leasing of Lot 8, Block 1, in the city of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution just read.
Some move.
Second.
Was that Councilman Johnson? Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Pacheco. Mr. City Manager, report.
Madam Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, now that council has approved the trade agreement with Mr. Schmidt and others in the city, the tenants of the Fire Station property would now need to secure parking, which is the impetus behind the agreement that you now have in front of you with the same partners. The idea with regard to the agreement is that 14 spaces would be leased to the petitioner and at a rate of $25 per space per month, which equates to $350 per month, in order to provide that needed parking for the tenants of the Fire Station building. The added note that council should be aware of with regard to this agreement is that this is for business hours as defined in the agreement, wherein hours outside of that stated allotment of time, those spaces would be available for parking with the public, by the public, and to be used by the public. And so where ordinarily those spaces would be available throughout the entire 24-hour period, I suppose, this agreement would make those spaces more limited, but yet available during the times by which activities and events typically take place. And so in that regard, those are the major elements of the agreement, and certainly if council has other questions, staff or others could entertain those.
Any questions for City Manager? So at this time, Mr. Phil Schmidt has been asked to come up forward to speak, so if you want to come forward.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, Phil Schmidt, 3911 Otter. I am speaking in favor of the lease. As I mentioned earlier, it is something that's vital to us as far as the merchantability of the facility. One of the key components of this program when we first did it was creation of jobs, and to a point that was made earlier by, I believe, Councilman Powell, when we did this, it was critical not only for our program and getting the new markets tax credits, but it was also seen as something to help the, I guess you'd say, the density of an area that was considered the Casper urban renewal area, and so it was part of the redevelopment of that area. So we did occupy it. We did find two other renters. We have a CPA firm on the main floor. On the second floor, we do have a stockbroker firm, and we also have an architectural firm. So those people are all housed in there, and as a result of the people that are doing their daily duties, it is a situation of customers need a place to park as well. Everybody's aware of the issues of downtown parking. I don't need to go into that. There's been a couple of businesses across the road from us that have continually used our lot. We did have a good relationship with the Iris, that we would allow people at the Iris to go ahead and park there after hours. So I think there's several of us downtown that worked in a very cooperative manner. And the reason we're here today is to continue on that relationship with the city of having available parking for those folks who are utilizing the facility. And with that, I'd attempt to answer any questions you have.
Questions, folks? Councilman Laird?
I've had a couple of people tell me they're worried about the parking down there because of these new bars that are open. And they're all going to have, they're all going to be, it's going to be tight, from what I understand, or especially around the Old Yellowstone District, behind where the Yellowstone Garage is and with this new bar that the Galloway Group is opening. So there's not enough parking, it doesn't sound to me like, until we build whatever we're going to build down there. So been renting you these 14 spots. I don't know what kind of precedent that sets, Phil. These other guys are going to come in here and want parking, and then what do, what do we tell them, I guess?
I guess there is a historical aspect to this, that that parking has been available to us, and we have utilized that maybe prior to when they were there. It's just like when I was on the waterboard, people were miffed over the location of the sewer treatment plant, and I was sitting there going, well, why did you build next to a sewer treatment plant if you knew you were going to have that problem? So I guess there's nothing new about the city leasing parking spots. This has been done with somebody else. It's been done with us now for almost 14 years, so I think there's a precedent that's been established there. I think if there's a good news for some of those establishments, their peak hours, I'm going to guess, may be somewhat contrary to our peak hours, because by and large, it's going to be, you know, an eight-to-five type of affair. I do not know where the city, or, excuse me, the state building is going to end up going. I do not know if there's going to be some kind of cooperative agreement between the state and the city as far as parking when that finally happens. So there's an awful lot of what-ifs out there, there really are, and I can appreciate that. But again, this is something that there has been a precedent for. It isn't uncommon, and it's a way for you guys to get money on some of the property that you have that's been sitting there and has a potential for not receiving any revenue.
One issue that's not in the lease you proposed is, we were to build a parking structure in there, I know that's been talked about. There's nothing that would address in that lease right now about how you would feel if we built a parking structure, we needed that lot, and then you would move your people into the parking structure.
You know, and Councilman Laird, I can't really respond to that, because I don't know what the future's going to bring. All I need is 14 spots, close to where these people are working. If, I'm going to guess, if a parking structure were to go up, it'd be a situation of somebody would say, holy cow, I can have covered parking versus outdoor parking, and it's something we would look at. But I don't know if there's something now in the horizon, in the immediate horizon about that. I don't know.
I can't foresee the future either, but I, I'm trying to as best I can. How many parking spaces do you have total now that you're using?
You'd have to ask.
Do we know that answer?
Well, there's, there's, the 12 that they're losing is Lot 39.
What we're trading for.
Their trade, as part of the trade. I believe that there is five to seven on Lot 38, yeah, on Lot 38 and 37, if I'm looking at the map correctly. And then I know that there are employees who are parking and customers who are parking currently in Lot 8, which is free all-day parking for public. And I don't know how many, how many of those spots are being utilized by employees at this stage.
So how many total, how many total do you think you're using?
I'm guessing 20.
Well, it'd be 14 and 12 is 26.
26, there you go. Yeah, see, this is why you asked the accountant to do math and not the lawyer.
So how many parking places will you have in the garage once that gets put together?
Well, what we're hoping to do is replace that parking with some of the parking on the side. I have not spent a lot of money on architecture fees right now to sit there and see how many spaces I can get into there, because until I owned the property, I didn't see a sense of doing that. Obviously, we're going to want to maximize the indoor parking, but I just haven't gone to that next level yet.
It looked to me like it will be at least 20 spots.
Well, I guess if we were just to look at that map, the depth of the municipal garage is real close to the depth of the lot we'd be trading. So that gives you an idea about how many can get in there. What I have to worry about is, how am I going to get the cars in there at the correct angles and the like? So even though we can do a quick down and dirty and see the relative depth is the same, what I'm going to be struggling with is making the corner off the alleyway and the positioning of the cars inside.
The width is what, what impressed me when I went in there. It looked like, if the width's right, I looked at it today, it was like you could park two sets of cars down each wall.
At the first blush, when we walked through there, that, that was not the general consensus. What a thought was, is that we could do some diagonal and then maybe some going parallel. But there was some concern over that from the standpoint of the people that were parking parallel would probably be getting the short straw and have the dents in the doors.
Gentlemen, I think we might have to finish this conversation later, since it's not quite, not quite part of this, so, any other questions that you have for him on this part?
But not about his building.
You're not allowed to ask any more psychic questions. I don't know if he can answer those. Okay, there's no other questions from council unless you guys have any for us.
No, we're, I'm excited about the first vote. I hope the second vote goes the same. We are very proud of that building. I had a great-grandfather and his brother that served out of that station, and we've taken a lot of pride in that, and we'll continue to do the same with the second renovation should it pass.
Okay, thank you.
I am up next on the agenda.
You are.
Wait, tell you.
You're still on there.
Okay. I just wanted to hit a couple high points in the agreement real quick. There is an escalation in the rent each year. I don't know if you guys noticed that or not. The other issue is, I don't know if you guys have been over to that parking lot. It is largely unused by the public during the day. I've been over there several times, and most of the times it is tenants who are using it, currently tenants of Fire Station, so it will provide some, you know, the parking, it's not taking up parking that we're concerned about necessarily. Again, this is during business hours, normal business hours, public use, after, I believe, 6:00 PM, it might be 7:00 PM in our lease, 6:00 PM, 6:00 PM in the lease, so it'll be available for all those David Street Station and the roaring 22 people. And then I think that's it. So it is, and it is a current unleased parking lot. It is a current parking lot dedicated as a parking lot, not parking on the street, so it's off-site. If you have any questions in the agreement that you'd like me to, like me to address, I'm happy to do so.
Anybody?
No.
So you're paying, so the public knows this, under the lease, you're renting 14 parking spaces for $25 a month per space, so that's less than a dollar a day. Is that the going rate in town?
Yes, that's comparable to other leases that the city currently has.
And you mentioned there's a, and there's a increase, but it's only 2% a year over the next 20 years, so like, the rent will go up from 350 per month this year to 357, so it isn't a huge raise.
No, it's a typo, it's a typical COLA.
It's, it's a good deal for you guys, is what it is. Which is fine. I'm, I'm all for good deals.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Further discussion or amendments? Councilman Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor. Some of the concerns that I have, and it's almost by design that we had the comprehensive plan prior to this, and we're talking about growth, the future of Casper, and that's, that's in there. We don't have a crystal ball 20 years from now, but what we can do, we can look back 20 years ago, maybe when Buttry's was open, Walmart didn't sell groceries, and Blackmore Road ended at a neighborhood. You look at downtown, we now have Roccas, we have a number of other establishments that are down there. What I don't like is the city can't, at some point, say, this isn't working for us, and I want you to have your parking, I think it's great, it makes sense, and it's fair. However, the fact that we're locked in for the next 20 years concerns me, and the main reason why is, our long-term vision of this area and this block includes a parking area, possibly a structure, should we need it. And so five years down the road, if we want to address it, right now we have the luxury of dealing with Mr. Schmidt, but we don't have that option. Should that change, transfer, or sell take place, at which point we can say, hey, look, we have this parking structure, we have this parking area, and what we'd like is you to lease this specific area for the same amount of money, same amount of terms, maybe. That sounds great, having that specific area taking up maybe the north area that is closest to your establishment, and maybe the west area too, would make sense. So I guess that's my biggest concern, and also the maintenance and repair, the fact that we're leasing it, we're also required for removal of snow and trimming- for removal of snow and trimming of trees. And it's funny to me, there's parking on the parkways, there's trees on the parkways, yet we require our citizens to trim those trees, even if they can't afford it, to deal with that. And should they be down at some point, they also have to pay for that. And it's something that we're not doing here. And I think that's unfortunate that we're having that exception, even if it does model other contracts, that's great. However, as Councilman Laird mentioned, repeating that same perceived mistake doesn't make sense, and it doesn't make sense to me. So I would hope that perhaps we can come to an amendment for those specific terms. Like I said, I want you to have parking, it's fair, it makes sense, but five years down the road, is that area going to be something different? Can we repurpose that? We saw a plan put together by staff that Liz saw, which is maybe an ice cream parlor, you know, a housing area in that, the stables area. So I'm just not sure 20 years from now, does it make sense, or maybe even 15 years now, from now having that be a parking area? Perhaps we can change that. David Street Station's now turned into something bigger and better, and it needs more parking. And like I said, we're still going to have a parking area for the Plains Building, and at that point, it'd be great to address, you know, could we sell those, or lease those 14 or more spaces to your tenants, your business, or whoever else? And for that reason, I don't support the 20-year and how it's written, the fact that we can't get out of it. As you see, if anyone else has a packet available, numerous other contracts that we're going to be approving on our consent agenda does give the city the option of terminating a contract within 30 days, and this one does not.
Councilman Pacheco.
This is just going to be real short. I support it as is. I think we should move forward with it. I think it's a good plan. I think the whole concept is good. I think sometimes we can overanalyze everything to a point of exhaustion, but I also believe that it's very important for us to know that this is a good deal, I think, for the city, and it's a good deal for Mr. Schmidt and his team. Thank you.
Anyone else? I'm going to assume in five years, we won't have the money to build a parking garage. Is that a safe assumption? So, yeah, I'm not going to worry too much about the details because I think the swap pulls together a whole, a whole function of new things downtown. So with that, no other discussion nor amendments? Please cast your vote.
My button didn't work.
And please record the vote.
With Councilman Morgan voting nay, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 34 to New Chopsticks Asian Bistro, Casper Incorporated, located at 1937 East Second Street. Mr. City Attorney, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. Excuse me. Pardon me, I'm very hoarse tonight. I have four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Tracy L. Belser to J. Carter Napier, dated June 27, 2017. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune, dated June 28, 2017. Exhibit number three, that is the affidavit of website publication as published by the City of Casper on its website, dated June 16, 2017. And exhibit number four is the actual liquor license application in this matter, which was filed with the city on May 10, 2017.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Briefly, this is a building that has had a restaurant liquor license in the past, and for whatever reason, the owners of the town did not renew that license. At this point, a restaurant liquor license is being petitioned from the city council. And it is appropriate to say too that the publications and so required for this level of licensure have been met.
Council will now listen to public comment. Public hearing comments are limited to five minutes and no duplication of speakers will be allowed. I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 34, please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in favor? This time, I'd ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition, please approach the lectern. Anyone who wishes to speak in opposition? There being no one to speak for or against the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 34, I now declare the public hearing closed. The chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the issuance of Restaurant Liquor License Number 34.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Huckabee, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Discussion. Amendments? What is the cost?
Yeah. It's $10,000, I believe.
How much?
10, $10,000?
I don't remember.
No.
Was it six?
It's not that much.
A restaurant.
It's 1,500.
I think it's 1,500.
Can we raise the price of those?
It seems like they're set by state.
Madam Mayor, I'd have to, kind of off the cuff here, I'd have to check the state statute, but I believe those are established by state statute. But I need to reserve that and I can get back to council with that answer.
Okay.
There's a range for bar grill licenses, and the other licenses are pretty much a flat rate. And so you have some discretion with bar grills, I recall. But I will get, I will get council an email tomorrow.
Thank you. So did this group previously have one? And something happened now? New owners? Okay. Anyone else? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 8A1, a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Town of KC for providing solid waste disposal services. Item 8A2, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Hall's Custom Paving and Excavation for the Catseye Parking Lot Repairs Project. Item 8A3, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Ramshorn Construction Incorporated for the 2017 Miscellaneous Sanitary Sewer Replacements Project. Item 8A4, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Grizzly Excavating and Construction LLC for the English Avenue Street Improvements Project. Item 8A5, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Solid Waste Professionals of Wyoming LLC for the Casper Bale Phil Closure Project. Item 8A6, a resolution accepting a tree planting grant from Keep America Beautiful for Trees in Washington Park, Highland Cemetery, and the Casper Municipal Golf Course. Item 8A7, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Inberg Miller Engineers for construction administration, materials testing, and survey control monument installation for the Columbine Street Improvements Project. Item 8A8, a resolution authorizing the execution of M-21 Utility Service Repair Permit with the Wyoming Department of Transportation for abandoning six water service lines at the intersection of Highway 20/26 and Highway 257. Item 8A9, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract with River Oaks Communications Corporation to update the Casper Municipal Code Regarding Telecommunications. Item 8A10, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with CNR Enterprise Wyoming LLC for the operation of the 19th Hole Restaurant at the Municipal Golf Course. Item 8A11, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Communication Technologies Incorporated for the purchase and installation of equipment in five 2017 Ford Interceptor SUVs.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the resolution, consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Walsh. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
Just going to try slow motion for you, Councilwoman. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 9A1, authorizing the sole source purchase of 10 Avon Delta self-contained breathing apparatus, four SCBA masks, and 19 one-hour SCBA cylinders. Item 9A2, authorizing the sole purchase of one Smith Detection Gas ID System.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please, please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, the motion passes.
Now's the time we'd invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we ask you the following. Please state your name and address. Council will not respond to personnel matters, these are referred to the city manager. Questions posed may not be answered, and please limit it to five minutes. Good evening, sir.
Five minutes, Pat.
Two for you.
Five minutes.
Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. Unless I missed something, I would like to welcome our new city manager to his first full council meeting. And I am personally excited to have him as part of our community again, as I am sure all of you were excited to have him as part of our community. And I think there, not always do I agree with the editorials in the Casper Star Tribune, but I found today's editorial very timely and agree with that editorial. Judging from the faces on council, nobody else reads it. So anyway. Sorry. But again, welcome, City Manager Napier.
That's a good job most of the time.
Secondly, I think state statute provides a limit on liquor licenses, what you can charge. And my recollection is, Your Honor, that we're already at the maximum on restaurant at the 1,500. That's not to say the state statute can't sometime in the future be changed. I also would like to congratulate council and our city engineering staff on, again, recognizing the value of our local contractors. And I see a number of locals on the list of contracts awarded. We need to keep that at the forefront in this economy in Nitrona County. Again, we had sales tax loss that was published today that I noticed, and three counties saw growth in sales tax. I think it was Wasachee, Teton, and I didn't write the third one down, but we were way down in the list, again, as losses. So again, thank you to council for keeping our local guys in mind whenever you can. Lastly, on the special meeting, council meeting tomorrow night, is the public able to also attend that? And my understanding is that will be at Hogan-on?
So our location has actually changed. We will be tomorrow night at the Fire Rock. This is geared more towards council. We will have a public meet and greet for our new city manager. I decided I'd give him a little bit of time to take a breath first before I start torturing him with everything else I've got on my big list of 5,000 papers, but we'll have the public one here very soon.
Okay. And will there still be discussion tomorrow night concerning Hogan-on or on altitude of...
We won't be discussing any kind of business, I believe. I believe we're just going to get to know our city manager and have a good time.
We'll only have two good... So...
We might let you in for cover charge.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak?
Good evening.
Good evening. How's it going, Madam Mayor, city council members? My name is Preston Pylent. I'm the executive director of the Pat Ring Foundation, and we came to a work session some time ago, I don't know, to approach about getting an amendment on a city ordinance. And I haven't heard anything yet, and I'm not real good on politics because my primary world is all dogs. But it's, I want to just kind of remind the council, and I don't mean to stress you guys and keep bugging you, but the foundation completely relies on this revenue, and we have now been shut down for three months. And we're like literally on the verge of having to close our operations. And I just kind of want to let you guys, remind you of what we do for the city besides our low-cost span neuter clinic, which also has been on hold for six months because of lack of funding. The Fourth of July was yesterday, our city services all shut down, so y'all could have your time with family members, which is great. The foundation stepped up, and we opened our doors and brought in 24 strays. All but five of those were returned back to their owners. The other five were transferred to Metro this morning. We had a lot of happy success stories of people being overwhelmed that their animals had been returned. We had two individuals last week, senior community members of Casper that had had emergency procedures. They had had to be transported to the Wyom Medical Center. The Wyom Medical Center reaches out to us, calls us, and tells us that they have pets. One of them happened to be in the car when the accident occurred. We take those animals into our organization, and we take care of them and tell the owners well enough to get them home. And so these are all different programs that are offered to the community. This is all free of charge, that we don't charge the community, we can't legally charge the community, and wouldn't want to charge the community, but our funding for our revenue stream for the 307 Bingo is what keeps us going. And that is because we found out we were in, against compliance with the code, we did shut down. And I have used up pretty much all the savings that we have. I just would like to stress to the council if we could find out where we're at with trying to get this taken care of.
Mr. City Attorney, didn't we pass that already?
We voted to move forward with it.
Oh, we just voted to move forward.
You simply gave staff direction to move forward, but nothing has come to my office yet on this item.
Does anybody know where we're at with that? I guess I thought it was done.
Transition going on with the city manager's office, so we'll have to look into it.
I thought we'd given him, I thought we'd given permission to do it, and he removed the black bus, which I appreciate.
It was at a work session. I don't know if you were there, Mayor. But we did, yeah, we gave, we gave direction for the city staff to move forward with so we could change the ordinance, so you could resume that, and so...
So we probably need to give him a little better time estimate. When can we have this done by?
Madam Mayor, if I may, allow me the opportunity to look into this a little further, and I'd be happy to reach out to our speaker directly and give him a better feel for what's happening and, of course, follow up with an email to all of you as well pursuant to that information that I might gather.
Okay.
That's all right.
Perfect. Do you want to make sure you guys have each other's phone numbers?
The city manager? I can just...
You can just call him. You know the number now. Do you need a cat?
A what?
A cat.
No.
Go ahead.
That requires an ordinance change, correct?
Yes.
So do we have to have three readings for that ordinance to pass?
That is correct, you will.
So that's a month right there.
And we're already...
Is there any way that we... Right. Is there any way we can grant an exemption or something?
Well, I think we, we could at least, can we do second reading during a work session as long as we publish it?
We can.
So let's try to do three readings in three weeks. Because I'm assuming, Mr. Lubin, you're going to say, "No, we can't let him do anything until that ordinance is approved."
It's not just them. It's also our vendor won't until they hear from the city that it's okay and that we're not breaking any ordinances. Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
That'd be the situation.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, the issue too is, and this is why it's almost ridiculous in a way, he's been operating three years illegally anyway. And so he found out, he didn't know he was operating illegally, as I recall, and... And so, he found out, he didn't know he was operating illegally, as I recall, and so, because there's a church within three hundred feet of his business, and so we've modified that so that he can operate, so. I hope somehow we can accommodate him appropriately. I hate to see anybody go out of business and, because he got lost in the hayfield somewhere.
Agreed, go ahead.
So maybe the city manager can reach out and have a chat to see where we're going from here, and then maybe we can, like the mayor said, we can try to expedite this for you.
Okay, I'd appreciate it.
As quickly as we can, and Carter will take care of it, or take care of you and talk to you a little bit.
I wouldn't mind seeing first reading Tuesday. Councilman Huckabee.
I also would like to see it Tuesday because I'm keenly aware of Preston's financial situation, and if his organization shuts down, we are going to see an astronomical influx to our own metro animal services, thus costing the city a lot more money than we're currently paying for those.
Actually, Madam Mayor, if this is on the gambling issue, is that correct?
Yes.
Actually, I, I sent comments, I apologize, I was thinking of something different. I sent comments back this week on the proposed ordinance for it to be revised and sent back to me for signature. So I anticipate I'll probably have that tomorrow or Friday. So, I sent the comments back today because, obviously, we were closed yesterday. I made the comments on, on the proposed ordinance last Friday and Monday, and then we, I submitted it to my secretary, he sent back to planning and zoning to make those changes.
Can we squeeze us on the work session then? I'll let, we can talk about it Thursday, but I wanna get this poor gentleman taken care of, because I just thought we were done already. Please.
Your Honor, I'm sorry to get up like this. Maybe we can get some direction from city attorney. I believe since this is a change to Title seventeen, it also has to go to planning commission, which lengthens the process significantly as well.
I didn't, well, I'd have to look at that, I didn't really view that as a change of zoning. No, it is a change of zoning. Take that back. Yes, it would. Plus, you'll have to advertise for a public hearing to change the zoning ordinance.
We'll get back to you with a plan that hurries. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
So you've already, you've already said that you're on the razor's edge right now?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're severely in the, in the negative, like, all of our landlords and everybody have worked in concurrent with us to kinda let us stretch things out, but it's, it's pretty bad right now.
Hold on, I'll donate fifty.
We appreciate that, Madam Mayor.
So my, I guess my, my question was just, wanted to see how critical we were at, at this point, and so it's at that point.
The bad part is, is that with the switching of all of our, to the session bingo, with this new vendor, it's gonna take them a couple weeks to come here, get everything set up, you know? And so, on top of waiting for the change, so it's, I honestly, I don't know if, I mean, if we're not, if something isn't in place by the end of July, I think that the foundation will have to close its doors.
Okay.
So is the church closing? Because if the church closed, he wouldn't have a problem.
I don't know if that church is even in a church. I mean, the building is a church, there's a sign on the door.
I don't think anybody's in there.
But the problem is, is that it's a zoned church.
If there's no church, then he can open up. So I think we need to find out if the church is open. If it's not open, I think you're legal. I won't put a stamp on that right now, but I think maybe you are. Uh-oh, Craig.
Your Honor, I, I think this could be solved if the council gave staff some direction on how we measure the three hundred feet. If it's building to building, then he exceeds the three hundred foot requirement rather than being measured property line to property line.
I think we want it measured whatever works.
Why don't Craig go? Go do it and make sure it's three hundred feet, but if the, I was told the church closed, but I haven't personally checked that out. But if there's no church there, there is no problem, that I can see.
Does everybody agree we want to see this happen as soon as possible?
Yes.
Whatever can be done to make this happen as soon as possible, do it.
The, the thing that could happen that could, while we're waiting to get everything finalized, is if my vendor could talk to the city manager and he could explain to them that you guys have given the okay, we're not breaking, you know, any city ordinances, and that we're in the process of getting that changed, then they could start moving forward to get everything ready so we could quickly escalate this and get this done. I don't know if that's possible or not, because, again, it's, the ordinance is on the books, and like Craig had told me, they, it's a stupid law, but they still have to enforce it, because it's there.
That might be a great conversation for you two tomorrow to kind of see if that will work. So, okay, did you get the check?
Yes, thank you very much.
Not much, but.
We appreciate every little.
Do you need to do a dunk tank or something raised totally down for a dunk tank?
Dunk grave. I'll pay money for that.
All right, sorry, man, I thought we had y'all taken care of. Anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak to council? Before I forget, a very intelligent woman gave me a sticky note, because she knew that I would forget, so I want to announce it one more time. Dinner location change tomorrow, Fire Rock, six o'clock.
I won't be there. I have to work, I go back to night shift.
You want me to call your boss?
We can call him.
Call the sheriff. Give him a call.
Good luck with that, right? Okay, Councilman Hopkins.
I don't really have any, thank you.
Councilman Walsh?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Powell?
Just great to see things moving forward with the plaza and with the, the fire station. I think, I think we're all gonna be pleased with the outcome.
Councilman Huckabee.
Thank you. I attended the most recent sexual assault panel, I think that was two weeks ago, and had fewer attendees than I had hoped for, but I think it was productive nonetheless, and I'm grateful to everyone who worked diligently to get that pulled together and rescheduled. I did receive a lot of feedback from people that were interested in that panel discussion, hoping that this is not the end of those community discussions, and that moving forward, perhaps we can have a victim panel. We've now had two panels with the professionals in the community who have dealt with this, and victims are hoping that there can be a panel of their experiences for the professionals and other community people to learn about what that was like for them. I think that's a good idea, and I hope that we can get something in place for that. And welcome, Carter. I'm so glad you're here.
Councilman Laird.
Couple things, just for a reminder for the city manager to think about and the city attorney. One of the things that, that I see come across our desks are, we're doing business with these LLCs. So under Wyoming law, an LLC is kind of a special beast. Wyoming was one of the first states to pass that particular piece of corporate law. What happens when you sign an agreement with an LLC, you're not signing it with, you're not signing it, for instance, with Phil, you're not signing it with him. You're signing with an LLC, he's not liable for, for anything personally. When LLCs borrow money from banks, they, the banks typically have the principal sign a guarantee, so their signature guarantees performance. And I don't know if the city's just never done that, or there wasn't an awareness of it, but like renting, I think you're doing business with an LLC up at the golf course, and you have no one that you can hold their feet to the fire for any kind of breaches of any of these contracts. Strictly the LLC, people who are careful with LLCs, there's very little assets or money in those LLCs, so you're doing business with a figment of everybody's imagination, unless there's a personal guarantee by, by the person standing there in front of you. So it's just something I want you to understand, just generally in corporate law in Wyoming, a lot of states don't have LLCs, but we do. A lot of these big time companies come here and incorporate because of that law, because it's, it's, people put their houses in an LLC, so if they go out and get in a car wreck and something happens, nobody can get the house. So there's a lot of reasons to use an LLC, but in terms of my duties as a councilman, I would rather have a guarantee by the people we do business with.
Mr. Lubin, is this where sometimes I see you, if we do some kind of loan or something, you've got us above the bank in priority of getting our money back?
When I do loan agreements, we actually take a first mortgage interest in the property. We have to under the Constitution, as well as the Industrial Development Act of Wyoming. Generally speaking, most of our contracts with the LLCs that Mr. Laird is referring, or Councilman Laird is referring to, deals with our contractors who bid on our projects, and they have to, of course, give the city a bid guarantee, as well as performance guarantees for the construction of the project, either through bonding or through letters of credit through separate banks. So we're collateralized that way. We do have some lease agreements out there, and, which have been signed by LLCs, but you do not have those type of performance guarantees, but they fail to pay the rent, we can evict them within three days, bring someone new in, and start over again. And in those cases, generally, we're not really looking at damages of any significant amount. So it's a, it's a trade-off. I'd also say that attorneys who have LLCs, if you want an agreement advantageous to the city, many times will not offer up a personal guarantee. But just for reference, when we did the section one oh eight loan with the federal government, Phil Schmidt actually personally guaranteed that loan with the federal government, and those guarantees are actually in an escrow agreement. This is all public record that I'm telling you about, and we structured it that way with personal guarantees. I will also tell you, when we developed the baseball field, the Mike Lansing Field, that also involved personal guarantees from the investors from California that I insisted upon, that were actually put in public record with the city. It's a question of balance. If you have a multimillion dollar project, that's a little different than a month-to-month lease agreement with someone that is difficult to find sometimes, that these providers to give services at that level. You start requiring personal guarantees, in that instance, it becomes difficult sometimes to get those agreements in place. But we do try to collateralize everything we can to the extent we can, especially with loans and anything dealing with real property.
Okay. Sorry, did you?
Just so you know, when an LLC is the only thing that signs it, that's the only entity that you can look at, I don't, and I'm not concerned about Phil's, because he's paying the money and we're making the deal swap, and it's three hundred and fifty dollars a month, but some of these other entities I've seen us doing business with, I'd prefer to see a guarantee there for somebody that you could come to if there was a problem with street construction or anything else.
Okay.
A very important legal issue that I think probably is somewhat difficult to grasp.
I think I followed you, though. Anything else?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
I don't think so.
Councilman Morgan?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. As somebody mentioned earlier, Representative Sweeney said it's great that we're working with local businesses, I think that's great. Hopefully, at some point, we can actually institute a workshop that I brought up at a work session for small businesses, just to show them the bidding process, where to look for bids, just so we're helping spur growth in that area, and that's the private sector. You know, obviously, there's not a big, there's not a lot of companies out there that are already snowplowing, for instance, so of course, that's something that we're taking on, but there are other businesses out there that are doing the same types of services that, that we're providing to our citizens, and I think that's important that we pursue other options, that is less of a burden on our general fund. On top of that, at some point, hopefully, we can maybe look at wayfinding for the city of Casper. I know somebody had mentioned earlier that the DDA said that they would take that on, but as you all hopefully remember, we cut funding a certain degree to the DDA, so I imagine they probably won't be taking that on anytime soon. Also, no harm, I guess, or no personal vendetta against the fire station, I think that's great, that that land swap took place, it was needed, and I'm glad they have it. I just think, in the best interest of Casper, I personally feel locked in for twenty years isn't the best case scenario. We talked about moving away from that, even with leases for baseball fields, for example, and it's not to just cut it off, it's just to simply readdress it, is it still working? Is it still something that we'd like to pursue, or is there another option that we can provide to them? And that's where I stand, thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Pacheco.
Nothing.
Okay. Let's see. Chief, can Amanda and I borrow you after the meeting? We'll be brief, I promise. Well, we are women, we'll do our best. The next meetings of the city council will be a special meeting to be held at six PM Thursday, July sixth, 2017, at Fire Rock Steakhouse. This will be a dinner meeting of the city council for the new city manager to welcome him and get to know him. A work session will be held at four thirty PM Tuesday, July eleventh, 2017, in the council's meeting room. The Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Walsh, seconded by Councilman Johnson? Please cast your vote. Really, Ray, really?
Ray wants to keep going.
Please record the vote.
All members voting aye, the motion passes.
Thank you, we are adjourned.